Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Muskogee City Council for October 25th, 2021. We will be led in the invocation by Councilor Alex Reynolds followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Please bag your heads. Heavenly Father, please forgive us of our sins. Please watch over and guide us tonight, Lord, as we sit down to do the city's business. Please help us have a clear and thoughtful head as we think about those things for our citizens and keep working on the projects that we need to make Muskogee a better community. Follow us and help us in all your activities, Lord, in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us turn to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
We will now consider the approval of the minutes for the special call City Council of October 4th, 2021, and regular session October 11th, 2021, or take other necessary action. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have any corrections that need to be made?
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items number one through eight. Are there any, is there any item on the consent agenda that a council alike moved to the regular session? Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now move to the regular agenda. Item number nine.
Hold a public hearing regarding the proposed creation of Increment District Number Five, City of Muskogee, and the Port of Muskogee Economic Development Project Plan.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This is the second public hearing as required. This TIF, the council put this TIF in motion in December of 2019. There's a presentation two weeks ago and without, at this point, on the agenda with the public hearing being listed and no citizens signed up to speak, I think it would be appropriate to move to the next agenda item for more discussion and to take possible action.
We will now close the public hearing. We have not had any residents to speak up to this item. Do we have any comments from the council? We will now move to item number 10.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4136A, an ordinance of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, approving utilization of apportioned tax revenues authorized by statewide vote adopting Article 10, Section 6C of the Oklahoma Constitution and implemented by the Local Development Act, Oklahoma Statutes Title 62, Section 850, approving and adopting the Port of Muskogee Economic Development Project Plan and expressing intent to carry out the project plan, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the review committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission, creating and establishing Increment District Number Five, City of Muskogee, designating and adopting the Increment District, excuse me, boundaries and the project area boundaries, adopting certain findings, reserving to the city the authority to make minor amendments to the project plan, authorizing the City Council of the city to carry out and administer the project plan, establishing a tax apportionment fund, authorizing directions for prospective apportionment of tax increments, establishing an allocation for use for tax increments, declaring apportionment funds to be funds of the city, and limiting the pledge of apportion increments to increments actually apportioned by the city, authorizing the City Council of the city or a public trust designated thereby to implement the project plan, utilizing apportioned tax increments to pay or reimburse project costs directly and/or to issue bonds or notes if feasible and desirable to pay project costs and to retire said bonds or notes from apportioned tax increments, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and containing other provisions related thereto or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, we have our bond counsel who's here representing the port to walk you through any further steps in regards to this agenda items is Nate Ellis.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis.
Very good. Thank you for having me here this evening. This is the end of the beginning of the process of establishing a TIF district for the Port of Muskogee. As Mike mentioned, this started actually nearly two years ago. We've held a series of review committee meetings over the past few months. They ultimately recommended that you would adopt this project plan and establish this TIF. The Planning Commission likewise recommended the same. We had a public hearing two weeks ago and then one just now and there's been no comments subsomely to the negative for this. And so you have on your agenda tonight an ordinance that actually establishes the TIF district, puts the legal structure in place and provides the authorization to move forward with that. Steps after you adopt this will be moving forward with the negotiation of appropriate development agreements with private entities relative to the proposed development out of the port and potentially the authorization of financing that would come forward. Those would come forward for approval at a later date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the ordinance. And Tracy, I apologize, or Tammy, I apologize for
That's okay.
how long that is, but it's one of the longest ones I have in my arsenal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have any comments from the council on tonight regarding item number 10?
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 10. Our Director of the Port, Kimber Scott, is here. Do you have anything to offer or we find this presented? Thank you. We wanted to just extend an opportunity. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider a motion to declare an emergency on item number 10.
May for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to declare an emergency. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance 4133A to rezone property located on the south side of Peak Boulevard, west of South 24th Street, being more particularly described in the ordinance from R1 Single Family Residential to I1 Light Industrial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a request from McKenzie Parks. He is the owner and applicant to rezone this property from the R1 Single Family Residential to I1 Light Industrial. It is to allow for a new industrial development. It is a trucking company that's ID Transportation Incorporated. They currently have 18 employees. This move will allow them to increase that by another 18, so have a total of 36 and hopefully more expansion. This is the location of the site. It is on the south side of Peak Boulevard. It's just west of South 24th Street. There's a picture of the site. And then this map shows the surrounding zonings. There are a lot of local commercial. There is a few industrial. However, most of the current uses in the area are industrial and any expansion or redevelopment of those would need to come under compliance under that industrial. The comprehensive plan and future land use map does show industrial and therefore staff and planning commission and public works recommend approval. If you happen to answer any questions. And the property owner is here if you have any questions.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing and take any questions or concerns from the council.
May for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Item number 12.
Consider approval to accept the 2021 Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in the amount of $3,161.21 or take other necessary action.
Chief Tehe.
Council, this is just a grant that we apply for every year and I don't know that we've ever been denied for it, but it pays for a good portion of our bulletproof vests.
Do we have any questions for Chief Tehe or a motion to approve?
May for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of expenditures of up to $200,000 to prepare all deliverables related to an alternative scope of work for FEMA to consider moving the USS Batfish from its current location on leased land at War Memorial Park to a location at Three Forks Harbor or take other necessary action.
Councilor Reynolds.
This is my agenda item. Excuse me. We have some very interesting things going on at the Batfish. We've run into some interesting circumstances. At one of our previous meetings, the Port Authority has come to us and let us know that our lease is just about over. We were kind of shocked by that. We didn't know that that was coming and we're a little blindsided. We've been working on a plan to put the Batfish back in place. If everyone will remember, we had the flood in 19 and the Batfish came up and almost washed down the river. We were lucky that some trees saved it from doing so. It is still dislodged and needs to be moved back. We're in the middle, or we've actually finished with several studies and a original scope of work, which will have us moving the Batfish back into its existing location. Several things have changed which make that very difficult, one of which is the TIF district that we are working on and are just passing. If that all goes through as planned, we're going to be having a new business locate in the port. That new business will be directly between the existing Batfish and the road. We're already in a very difficult spot where you can't be, the Batfish has a difficult time being seen from the highway. It's kind of tucked behind there. There's going to be two very large buildings in front of it now and as many as six railroad spurs in front of it. In addition to that, there's going to be a Homeland Security gate that is now going to be put on the port and in addition to a levee that's going to be built. So we, when Kimber came and informed us about the situation of our lease, she also informed us about the levee. Part of the TIF district that we're working for will be a levee that surrounds the port that will mitigate the damage of a potential flood coming up again. We have to protect our existing businesses that are in the port to help mitigate against any potential dead flood damage in the future. In addition to that, as we are trying to get new businesses to locate there, they're like, what about 2019? And so we really need the ability to do that and they're going to be building this levee to take care of that issue. Part of what she notified us that day is that's going to shift our project. We're going to have to greatly move the Batfish forward in order to accommodate the levee that's going to come in. Much like a bridge, there has to be so much slow, steady slope up, so much flat across, and then a slow slope down. That really changed where we were on the property was going to come up close to our building and now we have been informed that the Corps is raising that requirement by three feet. So we're having to rebuild, rebid the levee amongst other things. It's going to now go three feet up, which is going to be quite a bit more slope in both directions, which is potentially going to take our existing building out and other things, creating a major problem for us. We've been very fortunate that the port has come up with an alternate site and a plan and an opportunity for us and they have proposed us taking the Batfish and moving it over into the Marina or the Three Forks Harbor, if you will. And there's a couple of ideas over there. Most likely what we're going to look at trying to do is put the Batfish across from the Marina and make a nice spot over there. It's a great opportunity for us to move the Batfish. In its current location, we had difficulties with trying to figure out what we would do with it. We didn't know we were going to come into the situation where we were going to be asked to move it. Now the proposed location, we've talked about where we may be moving it many times, but the proposed location is absolutely a wonderful opportunity for us. The Marina has not quite met 100% in the past. The offices in the buildings are similar situation, as is the Batfish tucked back in the industrial park. It's not being utilized to the best of its ability. This new opportunity gives us the ability to combine all three things. The Marina facilities, the buildings itself, and then the Batfish will give us the opportunity to build a new gift shop and a new museum and take some of our assets, the military assets we have, the tanks, the guns, various things like that. Avery Fricks and Bob Coburn are working with us, getting permission from the Turnpike Authority and the Highway Authority. When you come across the Cloverleaf, if you will, on Harris Road, when you get on and off the highway, we're going to be putting things there. Tanks, maybe some boats, helicopters, and then also down at the 62 and Turnpike and maybe as far down as Chandler and the Turnpike. So when you get in that immediate area, you'll now be able to see military assets as well as when you come over that bridge. It's just going to be stunning because you'll be able to see the Batfish right there with all of that. So it will be very visible and will give us a lot of good opportunities. We have met twice now with Kimber and the port people. We actually went this last board meeting last Wednesday where we all went over to the port and surveyed the new location where they're asking us to move. And then our board, the trust board, did vote unanimously to try and move the submarine, to start an advertising campaign, and then to also kick off a new scope of work. FEMA has asked us to prepare a new study survey of the engineering and the construction process that would help us move it, what we can and can't do. We're extremely lucky that several things have lined up to work for us. One, we're going to be building a levee around the port. The construction company is going to be there with the equipment necessary to help move a lot of dirt. Also, we're going to be in a similar timeframe replacing the 62 bridge between Muskogee and Fort Gibson. We're going to have another contractor here that's going to have big time equipment, big time barges, trackos, cranes, etc., that are going to be taking down the old bridge and erecting a new bridge. So the interesting thing is that we're in a position right now where the people that we're going to need help from, advice from, potentially subcontractors and equipment, are going to be here working on two other similar projects where we can pull all of our resources together, get Muskogee behind this project and help move the Batfish. We're extremely excited about this opportunity. We're excited about the opportunities for travel and tourism. We're taking arguably our best asset that is not as well promoted as it could be and in a little bit awkward spot and we're going to move it over there. But it's an exciting project. We encourage everyone to take a look at it and please join on with our campaign to save the Batfish and move it across the river. And I'm just asking you guys tonight, and Mike can clarify this. FEMA has asked for an additional scope of work. We are hopeful that that will be reimbursed. We're not 100% sure, but we do have a $2 million window that we're working with the city. The city is going to be helping us cover the cost of putting the Batfish back into place or moving it, whatever we have to do. And then as we get our money back from FEMA, we will be reimbursing the city whatever FEMA will allow us to do so. Hopefully this second scope of work will also be included in that and that will be what we worked for very hard to make happen. Once again, I just want to reiterate, it is an exciting time. Our board has passed this unanimously and we're very excited about bringing travel and tourism, the port, the Batfish Board, and the city on to such a marvelous project that we can all work on together to showcase our wonderful river and the Marina and of course Muskogee. Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, just one further point of clarification is this would, these funds, we're asking to commit the emergency reserve funds. We just need to identify the funding that the council has already identified, knowing that this may be reimbursable, but it may not be. So this is just asking for additional funds from the same source the council has already committed.
And we also voted last week to start our own fundraising campaign. So we are, we're going to be looking to sit down with the Cherokee Nation, OGN E. The submarine will move from the creek into the Cherokee Nation and then also sit right next to the OGN E land. So we're going to be working with them to try and create strategic partnerships and working together. And then we're already starting to raise our own money, starting this next week. We'll have a campaign kickoff. So we will be raising money to help add to that. And if at all possible, we're going to try and get that reimbursed and/or covered from additional monies that we're raising. This time, I would please ask you guys to jump on board with this project and help us make Muskogee awesome.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I would move that we would approve this, to approve the money, to do the second scope of work and the engineering study.
Second.
From the same source as the previously committed money.
From the same source with previously committed money.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item on tonight. Any further discussion from the council?
What fund you said that was, Mike Miller, out of the emergency fund?
Yes. This is all, we wouldn't be doing any of this if we hadn't had the floods. This is from the reserve and the council's already committed money to help flood efforts at the Batfish.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit a letter of support for the proposed outdoor adventure park at Fern Mountain and associated trail and river improvements within the City of Muskogee and Muskogee County or take other necessary action.
So to the members of the council, this is my item on tonight. I'll give you some background information in terms of why we need to have the letter of support. The state of Oklahoma has been awarded approximately $1.8 billion in American Rescue Plan funding. Those funds will be awarded to cities and counties based on collaborative grant proposals that improve the lives of Oklahomans. Lieutenant Governor Matt Pinnell has expressed an interest for the proposed Destination Park at Fern Mountain. This Destination Park has the potential to be our own gathering place for the City of Muskogee and surrounding areas. It can include, but is not limited to, water taxis, zip lines, gravity roller coaster, hiking trails, mountain bike trails, walking trails that will connect to the existing trails that we have here in Muskogee. Muskogee County Commissioners have approved the creation of a trust authority exclusive to this project and they will make the application for approximately $70 million, which is 3% of the total budget awarded to the state for their ARPA funds. What we need to do to help move this project along is a non-binding letter of support for the project. The City of Muskogee will authorize, with your permission, after this is authorized, the county will authorize the same. Today at the meeting of the Muskogee Foundation, they also authorized a non-binding letter of support for this project. And by non-binding, that means that we are not committing funds, but we are committing our belief that this project can be successful. To piggyback off of Councilor Reynolds' comments, we are at the point with several projects in Muskogee that we can make Muskogee better than it's ever been in a long, long time. And this non-binding letter of support, if it will help us get there, will take us a long way to having our own version of a gathering place that can almost exceed what they have right here in the City of Muskogee and beyond. And so I'm asking us to allow us to write that letter in support of this Destination Park and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council?
This will be a great opportunity for Muskogee and for our tourism.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 15.
Discuss and take action to authorize the use of the city's fire training center by the Oklahoma Smoke Diver Association for the Oklahoma Smoke Diver Advanced Firefighter Training.
Chief Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I would like you to consider an opportunity for Muskogee Fire Department to enter into a partnership with the Oklahoma Smoke Divers Association. This organization provides advanced and in-depth firefighter training for firefighters across the state of Oklahoma as well as the United States. This partnership not only will bring revenue to the city, but would brand the City of Muskogee as a destination for advanced firefighter training. I have asked associates with the Smoke Divers Association to give a short presentation as to what they're about. I do recommend approval. I would like to introduce to you Chief Brian Lloyd and Chief Chad Miller.
Gentlemen, welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. It's like moving fast. I'm passionate about this program. I could talk about it all night, but this meeting's, for the sake of everyone in here, I'm going to give you the down and dirty. What the Smoke Diver Program is about, first of all, my name is Brian Lloyd. I've been a member of the fire service for 21 years. Past 20 years, the average number of firefighters that died in line of duty has been 82, 100. One of the things that the Smoke Diver Program is about is reducing that number. Anytime there's a severe injury or a death in the fire service, NIOH, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, comes in and they do what's called a line of duty death report. It's an in-depth study. What the Smoke Diver Program does is we track those line of duty death reports and then we build scenarios. We put firefighters through those scenarios and we teach them how to successfully, if they face those in the future, how to successfully overcome those scenarios and obviously not become injured or lose their lives. We have been, we have been around since 2018. Oklahoma is only the sixth state in the nation that has this program. We work in direct, we have direct partnership with Georgia and Indiana. Georgia's started this program 40 years ago. All our firefighters, the program's made up of firefighters from all over the state of Oklahoma. We went to Georgia, got the training from them, and then we went to Indiana, got the training from them. They're kind of, are the ones that vetted us, if you will. We've been doing the training since 2018 and we're looking, it's pretty much, it's been mobile. Fire department calls, hey, can you come here? We had this happen in Tulsa. Can you guys teach, can you come train our guys how to mitigate that? Or co- media calls, whoever. We've been mobile. We're looking for a place to call home, looking for a home base. And we approached, we approached the city of Muskogee's Fire Department. Um, they're receptive to it, and here we are tonight. So that's kinda what the program is about, how it helps the fire service. Chief Miller's gonna kinda talk to you about directly how it can help the city of Muskogee.
Good evening.
Evening.
So what does it do for the city of Muskogee? So i- in the spring and March, we bring in between twenty-five and forty students from around the country. And when I say that, the last class that we held, we had students from five different states. So that brings people, brings other firefighters into your city. It lets them see your facility. Um, we'll also bring between forty and sixty instructors in. We sign contracts with local hotels for the week, so all of our, all of our instructors, all of our students will stay inside your city. We'll negotiate those contracts with your hotels. All of the supplies were pretty heavy, um, logistically on the supplies that it takes to run our course for the week or six-day program. So we, we feed instructor students, roughly a hundred people twice a day during that time. I- in addition to that, our, our students and instructors are gonna go out and eat in your facilities while they're here. Um, the logistical support for our program to lumber, um, everything from drinking water to Gatorade, to the supplies that we need, hay and straw to run our course is gonna come from local vendors. Um, the Miss, the Georgia programs and the Indiana programs and Oklahoma anticipate in a six-day window of time, we'll bring between a hundred and two-hundred thousand dollars in revenue to your city from people that wouldn't normally be here, um, in attendance of our program. In addition, what we offer to the city and to the fire department is twice a year, we'll come in and conduct, um, quarterly or bi-annual training to assist your firefighters. Uh, we'll get with Chief Moore, figure out what it is, um, that's maybe facing in your, within your firefighters, and we're gonna come in and provide additional training to them as well. So like Chief Lloyd said, we're, we're a program looking for a home. We, we really are looking for a long-term place to, to call home, and we hope that Muskogee is the location that we get to come and, and hang Oklahoma Smoke Divers banner at for years to come. Thank you.
I wanted to say one more, one more thing, 'cause it's, one of the things I'm most proud of about this, about this organization is all the men and women that are part of it. We're a five-in-one, C-three. No one's, no one's getting paid. Everyone that comes in, all the instructors that come in to help, they're, they're doing it because they love the fire service and, and they're trying to help. I'm super proud of that. Um, you know, my wife is, is, has asked me for years, you know, you're always gone and you're not getting, you know, paid. And actually, I was looking at something else, and she said, oh, great, something else that you can be gone all the time and not get paid for. But anyway, just, it's, it's, we're super proud of that. Everyone's doing it because they love the fire service, they wanna make it better, and we're just looking for a home. Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing. Um, we already have hold harm- harmless agreements in place, and they would just fall into that category, uh, when they do use the training facility. So thank you guys very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Moore. Do we have any questions or?
For approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? Thank you, Chief Moore, for bringing us to Muskogee. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number sixteen.
Receive report on the city of Muskogee spay and neuter program and take other necessary action.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Uh, I wanted to give an update on our spay and neuter program. We also had an event held at the Muskogee Civic Center on October ninth. I wanted to do a recap on it. I've put together a presentation, some pictures, and, uh, kinda review of our ordinance that was passed last year. And so I wanna touch, take a moment to, uh, touch on that. Uh, we created section fourteen dash one fifty-four, which is our spay and neuter assistance program. That was approved in January of twenty-twenty. This provides sterilization procedures, spay and neuter services, uh, to all residents of the city of Muskogee. Uh, there's two participation tiers that a residence, uh, can, uh, be part of. The first is the no-cost tier. Uh, it's based on an owner's financial need, and will pay one hundred percent of the sterilation, uh, sterilization cost for the spay and neuter services. Um, the automatic qualification is if the owner receives Sooner Care, Medicaid, uh, food benefits, SNAP, TAMP, uh, SSI, um, or they, uh, qualify based on their gross household income, which is determined by HUD. Uh, if they don't meet any of those qualifications, they will at least have a fifty percent voucher, uh, that they're eligible for, and these services will be held at our spay and neuter clinic out, uh, at the animal shelter. Uh, council approved capital outlay funds for this, uh, fiscal year to be used towards the purchase of equipment needed for the spay and neuter clinic. Uh, some of those items include, uh, surgery tables, anesthesia machines, surgical equipment, uh, that we've got listed there. I'll be honest with you, it's been a long process. I didn't know anything about surgery equipment six months ago, uh, but now I know quite a bit about surgery equipment. I didn't see this, foresee this in my career, but it's been a long path, uh, but not without the help of some friends up in Veneta, PA, Oklahoma Humane Society, and a lot of good partners in the community that's helped us get to where we are today. On October ninth, we had a hundred percent free spay and neuter clinic that was held at the Muskogee Civic Center. Uh, eighty-six animals were spayed or neutered, uh, at that day. Animals received also rabies shot, parvo, wormers, uh, and other vaccinations free of charge. There's also free food, kitty litter, and name tags were also available, uh, to the owners that came to that clinic that was able to get in. Uh, this was made possible by, uh, Fehr Babies Adoption Rescue, which is a local organization here in Muskogee. A very generous donor, uh, donated the funds to have this clinic. Uh, we had three different vets that came in, uh, a team from Oklahoma City, a team from Tulsa, and a local vet that came to make this possible. Uh, there's a lot of equipment involved, a lot of anesthesia machines, surgery tables, uh, a lot of volunteers that, that, uh, we brought in to make this happen. Uh, the Oklahoma Humane Society, Dr. Sinar, Dr. Crusoe, and Dr. Schneeburger were the three vets that we had. Uh, TagOK, which provided free, um, tags for all the animals that showed up there in the city of Muskogee. Uh, here's some pictures, uh, that we took of the event there. Uh, as you tell, we had three different operating tables going at the same time with our three vets and the vet teams. Here's kind of a different view. On the bottom of the screen is, like I said, the vet tables where they're doing the surgeries. The middle of the screen was a pre-op table. They'd bring the animals in, uh, shave the area where they're gonna do the incision, uh, get the animal under anesthesia, transfer over to the vet table, they do the surgery there, and then recover them. A little bit upper in the top picture where the animals will be recovered, and somebody would stay with them until they were up and walking and good to go with their owner. This is, uh, our deputy director, uh, Kelly Bowden, also assisting. It was an all hands-on-deck type day. Like I said, we had a lot of volunteers there, uh, to make this happen. Uh, this was the food. We had, uh, about six pallets of food and items that was donated to the city of Muskogee from Oklahoma Humane Society. Uh, this is just some of the food that was given away that day, along with, uh, kitty litter and everything else for the participants that showed up. So this was kind of the kickoff for our spay and neuter program that we're gonna hold at, uh, our animal shelter, our city of Muskogee Animal, uh, Spay and Neuter Suite. We're currently working on an online schedule that will embed with the city's website, that will allow our citizens to go to our website and go to the animal shelter section and pick an appointment date, uh, when they can come and get their pets spayed or neutered. Also allow them to pick their time. Uh, also allow the citizens to prepay, uh, for services if that's required there through the website, instead of having to worry about it that day. Uh, we're working out the final details and initial date of the first clinic, uh, with Oklahoma Humane Society. So our first spay and neuter program will be November fourth, not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday. Uh, that'll be a trial run for us. Um, that's why it's not advertised to the public quite yet. We wanted to do a trial run with possibly, uh, animal shelter animals, maybe a local rescue, to one, make sure the process works, right? We wanna try everything out first before we launch this out to the public. After that, we're planning to have these services, uh, every other week, twice a month. Uh, we're planning to do twenty-five animals, uh, is our goal, uh, every other Thursday. So, you know, approximately fifty animals a month that we plan to spay and neuter at our, uh, city of Muskogee Animal Shelter. Uh, so like I said, our first event is November fourth. I invite all of you to come out there, please take a look, uh, see how this process is going, take a look at our surgery suite. Uh, like I said, this is not just a facility that we built, but it's the entire, uh, spay, nurture, uh, spay and neuter suite. A vet will be able to walk in and perform spay and neuter services there. We'll have everything there that they need. Uh, their anesthesia machines, the autoclaves, the surgery equipment, the surgery lights, the surgery tables, you name it, it's a full-blown, uh, surgery suite that's gonna be at our, uh, animal shelter. So I invite you to come out and take a look at it if you have the time. And that's the, uh, completion of my presentation, if there's any questions.
Does the council have any questions for, uh, Mr. Evans? Mr. Miller, I saw you waving your hand.
Yes, I do need to apologize on behalf of Mr. Evans because he did not have near enough cute puppies and kittens. He should never miss an opportunity. Uh, but, but real quickly, I wanna just take just a few seconds to, to give credit to the city's hard-working staff. This is something that's not been done before. This is a new thing, and the council asked to have it done, and it's getting done, it's getting done well, it's gonna be done continuously at our new animal shelter that we've built. And we need to just acknowledge that as we're going and say thank you. Uh, again, the next agenda item's got two new events that we've been, that we've been doing here. I wanna thank our police for being on the cutting edge, trying to find partnerships to, to get money for our vets, and our firefighters for trying to be the leader in safety training. That's all happening right now, and that's our staff leading the way. And so, uh, if we can forgive Tyler that one mistake, I think we could say that the staff's doing a really good job. So I just needed to interject that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Evans? Tyler, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen.
Receive presentation on the twenty-twenty-one Local Motion and the Oki Jeep Jam and take other necessary action.
Ms. Brooke.
Good evening. Uh, I'm excited to talk about the Depot District, or Depot Green and, and District Event. Uh, if I have the presentation ready, I'll flip through pictures. Mark put together a presentation. So we started the season with our grand opening and ribbon cutting in May. Uh, we planned weekly events. We have All-Aboard Thursday, we have the cycling group that meets there on Tuesdays. We did a few exercise classes through the summer before it got too hot. Uh, we had a weekly, so on All-Aboard Thursday, we would have a musician every week singing, and we'd bring in a food truck and invite families out to enjoy the lawn, uh, put out cornhole, portable disc golf, just tried to create a fun atmosphere. And we have some great photos, too. Uh, movie night, so once a month, we'll plan movie night and have, uh, guests out. We had the digital screen there, and it worked perfect, uh, for the evenings. So our, our end-of-the-season event was the Fall Arts Festival. Local Motion was kind of the theme that we had for the summer, and I think we'll keep that. It's a great, uh, creative name that, we worked with the Depot District Committee, uh, the Muskogee Art Guild helped tremendously. The Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame was part of this event with induction and the concert that evening. We had bands all throughout the day, uh, twenty-five vendors set up. Uh, we were highlighting local artists. Uh, we had, uh, food trucks there. There's some great pictures. Drone Optics came, so they, they have some fabulous photos. We got great feedback from the vendors. They loved the setup, they loved the sidewalks, and, uh, just gave us great, uh, feedback on the park. So we had, our painted pianos were a hit. Food trucks. Car show was there also that day. The stage sound was great. And then, of course, some aerial views of the final, uh, finale concert. It was awesome. The concert was great. So that's just a quick update about what we've done. We're planning, uh, our winter season with, uh, Depot Christmas. Uh, our train will be here soon. I'll start planning activities, and then we'll be ready to plan for our, our next summer activities as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback.
Brooke, do you wanna go through Jeep Jam first, and then? Or do we want questions now, council, on this first event?
I'm just gonna say you guys did a wonderful job. I totally enjoyed it, and the community did, too. Keep doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Here we go, we've got Jeep Jam up. Now Jeep Jam twenty-twenty-one was held, um, October first, second, and third, and it was a c- collaboration between, uh, the city of Muskogee and the Muskogee Exchange Club. And all of the net proceeds from this event go to local children's charities. And I would like to extend a special thanks to Councilor Stephanie Morgan, uh, who was there all three days, and, uh, she was a trooper helping out wherever she could. So thanks very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
We have random shots of the event here. Uh, we had, um, vendors located around, we had, uh, the Show and Shine, which was the Jeep Show. Uh, we had two onsite trails as well as the playground, and that is a Jeep playground. And, uh, so i- i- and we had to have car wash stations onsite, if you can imagine why. So, uh, it was a great, wonderful, and fun time, uh, that was held, uh, had by all, and there's why we had to have a, uh, car wash onsite, uh, which was very popular, and there's always a line. More shots from the playground. And there is our RV area, which you can see was, uh, very popular as well. Now, just a few stats from this. Uh, there were four-hundred-and-ninety total Jeep registrants this year, which was eighty-one more Jeeps than we had last year for a thirty-eight percent increase. We had eighty registrations for RV and tent camping with hookups, and we had thirty-eight registration for primitive camping. And this is one that I really like. A hundred-and-eighty-seven different cities in ten different states came to this event. A questionnaire was given to all four-hundred-and-ninety registrants, and one-hundred-seventy-three of them responded, which is a, a good response rate, thirty-five percent. And the top four responses to where did you stay during the event were home, hotel, RV and camping with hookups, and primitive camping. And when you extrapolate the hotel stays out to all four-hundred-and-ninety participants and registrants, that comes to one-hundred-seventeen hotel rooms. And that's not hotel room nights, because some people stayed one night, some people stayed two nights, and some people were rolling in here on Thursday so they could be ready at noon on Friday when it started. So they were here three nights. And when asked, you planned on attending Oki Jeep Jam next year, of those one-hundred-seventy-three respondents, one-hundred-and-fifty-six said yes, sixteen are undecided, and one said no. Uh, extrapolate that out, and that's four-hundred-and-forty-four yes, forty-three undecided, and three noes out of four-hundred-and-ninety participants. So I think that's, uh, that was a home run. So I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments or feedback.
Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe recognize?
Yes, Mr. Van.
Yes, I was just wondering, uh, Rick, you know, on that one Jeep where you got that teeter-totter?
Yes.
I was, I didn't get to go, but I watched it on Alan Thompson's video. Did anybody ever get the, get it right? I mean, where they wouldn't go down?
Not that I saw. I have seen it done, though, before. Um, can't remember if it was last year or the first year, but, uh, but somebody did do it. And it was really impressive. You would've thought they, you know, just won the Super Bowl or something. Uh, so it was, it was really great, so.
The mayor's always talking about, uh, what's that, Mary? Muskogee's a place to work.
Live, work, and play.
Live, work, and play. Well, one thing he's got to admit, in Ward Three, you can always come play.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that in for awards, you know, just, you know. Well, I thank the Parks Department, everybody involved. I think this is very good for our city, and I think you do.
Thank you.
Y'all do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There are a couple of things, uh, Mr. Miller, I'd like to see us do. Uh, one, uh, relative to how well the music festivals seem to be going when we have them here in the city, I'd like to see what a twelve-month budget looks like so that we can have live entertainment every month, uh, so that we can continue the type of atmosphere that we're providing to the residents. And then I'd like for us to think about the cost of running water and sewer, uh, to the RV area so that they would have more than one dump area. I think at the present time, uh, all of the hookups have to share a dump station, and I'd like to see what those costs look like, uh, so that we can expand capacity. Uh, because I think what we have, uh, before us, uh, is a wonderful opportunity. Uh, we've proven through the efforts of the Park Department, and let's give them a hand on tonight. We've proven through the efforts of the Park Department that when we get festivals, uh, Muskogee residents will come out, and not only will Muskogee residents come out, but people will come from far and near to participate in those events. And so, I think that's a good idea for us to look at, because I'd like the council to consider taking up those costs before the end of the year, so that as we go into January, we have all of the tools and resources we need to put on festivals 12 months, and then when the time of summer comes, be ready to look at the water and sewer line capacity for the RV park.
So, Mr. Mayor, you can give your Parks staff even more credit. They've anticipated your needs, and we do have engineered plans for a sewer, a sewer line out at the RV park, and we'll be able to move forward with that relatively quickly, and I'll continue to work on that other item you've suggested.
Very good. Any comments from council? Thank you. Let's just celebrate all our staff right now. We have good news in Muskogee. We want to be a city where the good news outweighs the complainers. So, thank you very much. We have two citizens signed up to speak to us tonight. The first is Mark Patel. I would ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes. Max Boyson has also signed up. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thanks for letting me go first, Mark. I'm here regarding yet one more proposed change in the tourism promotion for Muskogee. More specifically, the oversight and administration of the hotel motel tax revenue, which is now approaching $1 million a year gross. I think as of today, the number is 967,000 and something for this year. Up until 2019, the Muskogee Tourism and Chamber of Commerce managed these funds and brought Muskogee into a new era by utilizing these dollars for advertising and promotion. Credibility was established and enhanced at the state tourism level with multiple Red Bud awards to prove it. It can also be measured by the increases in the tourism tax, and I've attached to the packet I just handed out the tax collection history. Here's a recap of the changes that started in 2019. Number one, 2019, council created an oversight committee known as the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, appointed by the mayor and council. Number two, in 2020, council proposed moving this function from the chamber to the city. It was passed over objections of all citizens who spoke at that meeting, as well as the council-appointed MRA board. These were your experienced and invested volunteers. After the chamber withdrew, and I use that term loosely, from the contract due to the city's reduction of allocation, council changed direction again. Instead of bringing tourism into the city as proposed, it changed directions and awarded a new contract to the Roxy Theater Community Trust, now known as the Muskogee Tourism Trust. Number four, a new proposed change as of last week was made to amend the 2020 agreement with the city and change the administration to Oxford Productions. One of my observations at that meeting was only one member on the board had any direct investment or experience in the tourism industry. There were several people in the audience with experience and investments in tourism but had no opportunity to speak due to the agenda not having a public comment item on the agenda like city council does at every meeting. I feel it is the chairman's responsibility to foster transparency and full disclosure regarding the items that have a direct input and impact on citizens wholly or partially dependent on the successful promotion of tourism. It is my understanding the proposed amendment to the contract must be approved by city council. I ask that not only should this amendment be scrutinized, but the direction the council has taken over the past three years may need to be revisited with an emphasis on transparency and inclusion of experienced and invested partners with tourism experience. A review of the current one, three, and five-year tourism plan should also be included.
Mr. Boyson, I'm going to make a motion that you have an additional two minutes.
Second.
Okay. I didn't realize that was up. Sorry. Thank you.
Roll call.
I'm about finished.
Tracy Who's, Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Please continue, Mr. Boyson.
Well, good. I'm at the thank you part. I want to thank councilors that have always been available to discuss these concerns of mine. Ivory, Evelyn, Jamie, Derek, Alex, Stephanie, Tracy Who's, and Tracy McGee's have always taken their volunteer time to listen to my questions and concerns, even when we may not agree. We need transparency, open communications, and experienced board members. We need a budget reviewed by both the city and the tourism partners. This budget is approaching $1 million annually and is too important to Muskogee's economy to allow small-town politics and rookies in tourism to stymie the progress we have made over the past 10-plus years. Please take this opportunity and the time to get it right this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Mr. Patel, I'm going to ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I make a motion to give Mr. Patel two extra minutes?
We have a motion to extend the time to five minutes and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Ms. Patel, give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Mark Patel. Address is 2928 19 Military Boulevard, Muskogee, Oklahoma. This morning, after evening, I'm representing Muskogee Lodging Hotel and Association, who are here. I attended the MTA meeting last Thursday, and I was totally disgusted with the meeting itself. One of the things, we fought with Chamber to do something different a few years ago. The city took over from the Chamber, the tourism contract. Then, MTA was created, and now Oxford Production is trying to take it over as a third party. At that time, during the meeting, Jordan Jurgerson asked for a 30-day time to consider the contract that Avery Fricks with Oxford Productions had given. All but one or two of the city council members that were on the board voted yes or no. All the others voted yes not to give her the 30 days. That's one of the things I'm really disappointed in. Jordan, we, when we hired Jordan, or when the city hired Jordan, it took a long time. Right now, Jordan does a terrific job, right? There's a chance we could lose her, right? Or there's a chance Oxford Productions may not want her. When you spend so much time, so much money on getting somebody that doesn't, does the job and knows the job really good, I don't know why we wouldn't give her 30 more days, right? That's one of the reasons I'm talking today, is just to give Jordan 30 more days that she requested that was denied at the MTA, MTA meeting. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I'm going to talk about it on a different meeting time, because this, this, it may take more than five minutes that I'm allowed. So, but anyway, what Max says, I agree with Max, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patel.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I suspend the rules and be allowed to speak two minutes or three minutes?
Which, two or three?
Three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Mr. Van, give us your name and your address. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Mark Patel. Address is 2928 19 Military Boulevard, Muskogee, Oklahoma. This morning, after evening, I'm representing Muskogee Lodging Hotel and Association, who are here. I attended the MTA meeting last Thursday, and I was totally disgusted with the meeting itself. One of the things, we fought with Chamber to do something different a few years ago. The city took over from the Chamber, the tourism contract. Then, MTA was created, and now Oxford Production is trying to take it over as a third party. At that time, during the meeting, Jordan Jurgerson asked for a 30-day time to consider the contract that Avery Fricks with Oxford Productions had given. All but one or two of the city council members that were on the board voted yes or no. All the others voted yes not to give her the 30 days. That's one of the things I'm really disappointed in. Jordan, we, when we hired Jordan, or when the city hired Jordan, it took a long time. Right now, Jordan does a terrific job, right? There's a chance we could lose her, right? Or there's a chance Oxford Productions may not want her. When you spend so much time, so much money on getting somebody that doesn't, does the job and knows the job really good, I don't know why we wouldn't give her 30 more days, right? That's one of the reasons I'm talking today, is just to give Jordan 30 more days that she requested that was denied at the MTA, MTA meeting. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I'm going to talk about it on a different meeting time, because this, this, it may take more than five minutes that I'm allowed. So, but anyway, what Max says, I agree with Max, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patel.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I suspend the rules and be allowed to speak two minutes or three minutes?
Which, two or three?
Three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Mr. Van, give us your name and your address. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Councilor Ivory Van. I live at 4338 Columbus Street, Muskogee, Oklahoma, 74401. And I was at that tourism board meeting. I was very disappointed, just like Mr. Patel and Mr. Max Lord. You know, I think Mr. Jordan, she's doing a wonderful job, and like I said, we've been here before, two years ago. And one of the main reasons I wanted to talk and say something, because you see all these hotelians out here, I'd like for them to stand and be recognized. These are the, these are the women and gentlemen that keeps our Muskogee hotels going. These are the owners. They're the ones that brings the money to the city. And another thing I would like to say is, I think, you know, on tourism, you know, you don't have to live here in Muskogee, but they have businesses here in Muskogee. Somebody on one of those boards need to be on the tourism board to represent, because, like I say, I think Mr. Patel wanted to be on the board, but he lived out of town. I think one day, we need to sit down and set some rules down where Mr. Patel can be on the board. They're the ones that bring the money to Muskogee through our hotels, towards our tourism and all this. You would think one of them should be allowed, because it's been done. It was done on the airport board, through the county, I believe. If I'm not, I may be wrong, but I think I'm correct. So, tonight, I'd like to thank the hotelians for coming up here and speaking on this issue, because, like I said, the other day, when I went to that meeting, that was a mess. That was a mess. I was ashamed myself, because, like I said, we can do better than that here in the City of Muskogee. And thank you again for coming up here and voicing your opinion. And that's why citizens should come up here to this city council and let us know how they feel. I say it all the time. Citizens should come up here and let us know how they feel, because we can't read their minds, but y'all came tonight, and I just want to thank you. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Item number 18.
Mr. Mayor, can I get three minutes, because I want to clear up something? Is that be all right?
Let me, let me interrupt. If the council wants to suspend the rules for themselves, and it's in response to the other, that's engaging in a discussion. So, I would suggest that we not do that. If it's in response to...
It's not, it's not in response.
Okay, okay.
I would like...
Do we make a motion or not?
Yeah, you would need to.
Move to approve, three minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Who's.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Item 18C, pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters Local Number 57. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing, ongoing negotiations, no action is necessary at this time. Item 18B, pursuant to Section 307B4 Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss the city of Muskogee's participation in a possible global settlement in the lawsuit styled Muskogee Medical Center Authority versus Muskogee Regional Center LLC filed in the district court in and for Muskogee County, case number CJ 19405. And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C, pursuant to Section 307B4 Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Arrowhead Mall v. City of Muskogee, CJ 202047, filed in the district court in and for Muskogee County,